This conference will now be recorded.
Mayor, I think everyone that every council member you had, I think has successfully signed in. I'm looking, I know we have Marklow, Weatherly, Robbins, Davila.
Got Frank. Where's Dave?
Yep, Dave.
One, two, three, four, five.
Yeah, Dave would be it, Mayor.
Frank, you need to turn on your microphone. I see your lips moving, but can't hear you.
Bunch of y'all look like you're actually at City Hall.
Look at that.
There you go.
You got that fancy backdrop.
Where's yours?
You didn't get one?
No.
I've got it right over here.
I didn't get one either.
Darcy, if you get here before Council Robbins, I've got it right over here.
Okay, I'll come get it.
I see, I can see Gina's got her microphone on. Gina, where's your husband?
Sitting in the other room.
He's on his camera. We don't get him.
Wait, let me go tell him. David, they don't have you.
Yeah, I'm trying to get on.
He said he's trying to get on.
This screen flashing back and forth is going to give me seizures. Hey, there he is.
You're welcome.
All right.
So people at home can watch this on YouTube, right? They don't have to be signed into the meeting?
That's correct. They have to be signed in to the meeting, but then after the meeting, they can, they can watch it on the YouTube channel after the meeting.
To watch it live, they have to be in GoTo, though.
We are recording, Mayor.
Okay. Action items. Number two, we reconvene from executive session into open session at 6:33 PM to act as deemed appropriate in city councils discretion regarding A consultation with legal counsel and possible action concerning a regular meeting agenda item.
No action.
And B discussion on a request to purchase real property from the city.
Should we make a, do we need to make a motion on the things that we discussed? No.
No, because it was just, it was just a discussion. There was nothing open for action. All right. Got to make sure. Okay. Citizens in comments. A roll call. Sandra, make sure you note that we have everybody here except for Tim Collins. He is not with us tonight. Citizens in comments, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions. Any items not on the agenda. For those of you watching at home, it looks like most of you have your microphones already muted. But if you have something to say, you can unmute your microphone and let us know and state your name and I'll recognize you. So is there anybody out there who would like to make a citizen comment at this, at this time? All right. As far as I could tell, I don't hear any. So I have a couple of comments. I think a lot of y'all, most of y'all have been watching either our website or Facebook or something like that. We have made a button or a, I don't know what you call it, a banner on our website specifically for the COVID-19 information. So if you're going to our website, looking for any kind of COVID-19 information, there is a banner that says that. You can click on that and it'll have all of the updated information that comes available to us. We try to put it under that, under that banner. We get updates every day from the county and Texas Department of Emergency Management. And if there's any new information, we put that on there and we also include things coming down like our small business, public assist information and just any kind of information that we think the community needs. We try to put it out there on the website, keep everybody informed, all in one location. Also, if you haven't downloaded the app yet, I think there's instructions on our website. There's a little floating icon down at the bottom of our web, of our homepage on the website that tells you how you can log into the city app. We have a new city app that went live last week. Looks like that. So if you have not downloaded the city app, please do so and pass it on to everybody because that makes accessing city of Lago Vista information much easier. And it's right there on your phone. You don't have to log into your computer or anything. So we're trying to update and pass on the information as fast as we can. And I won't get into all the tools and stuff that are on the app right now. But at some point, if you want to contact me or somebody on staff, we can let you know everything that's on it. Third, I got a call from Randy Kruger today, former mayor of Lago Vista. He let me know that former council member Darrell Hunt passed away today, 2:45 PM. There's no other details to share right now due to the coronavirus stuff. It doesn't look like the family is going to be able to have a funeral or anything like that other than whatever they could work out family wise. Randy was saying, hopefully whenever all this is over, family will come to Lago and they'll have some kind of memorial service for Councilman Darrell Hunt. And that is all that I have at the moment. Is there anybody else, council staff that has anything?
Mayor, I was going to provide a couple of updates on the process here. First, as you already said, anyone that's not a council member or an applicant, someone's on the agenda, just remember to stay muted. So we don't get that reverb that kicks back. Second thing is, I did not receive any citizen comments or comments to an action item prior to the meeting. If anyone that's signed, if anyone that's here in the meeting would like to submit that comment, please utilize the chat function that's in the top right corner. It's a circle that looks like a chat dialogue. If you click that, it'll open up a chat box and you can type in your message there. And then Mayor, when you look for any questions, if we open that up, if you direct me, I can read any questions that we receive and make sure we get that information out to council so that you can consider any of those comments during your consideration of any item. And then the only other comment I was going to make on the app, we have 614 downloads so far. So we've had a good start. That's about one tenth of where we want to end up at. So we have nine tenths to go. So everyone here, it looks like we have 26 people on this call. Make sure, Darcy's already calling somebody to tell them to download the app now. Make sure to get that out to as many people as you can and let's get the information because we're getting some positive feedback on the push notifications. There's a huge value add to get the information out instantaneously. We had a water break, a small water line break that impacted three different streets and we sent that information out. That was a value add. We have tons of COVID-19 updates to provide. We're sending those out. When the governor comes out and says something, we make sure to send that and we're directing people back to this information. So that's just a really valuable outlet for us to have. The last update I had, Mayor, was to point the information that we pushed out this week that the city of Lago Vista and our partner KLVB, we were awarded the Governor's Community Achievement Award. And that's very exciting. We got first place. Last year we were second place. And so I encourage everyone to go online, check out that press release that we pushed out and know that with that award, not only comes the recognition, but it also comes with $130,000 towards another community beautification development project. So collectively, a lot of partners involved in that and we're really excited to have that recognition as a city and be able to do something else moving forward.
Could I make a comment on that?
Yes, Frank.
Josh Ray wrote that grant, wrote, wrote the application. And I'm going to do this again when we get back into regular meetings and we can shout out for Josh Ray. It is unheard of for city managers to do this kind of stuff. It's not easy. He had to pull together a ton of information, but I just want to say, Josh, great work. Thanks.
Thanks, boss.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So Josh, I have clicked on the chat button. So I can see now we have Stephanie Modl, project manager for Lake Shore Boulevard online. So I should be able to see the questions as well. So as we go through the, through the agenda, I should be able to see them myself.
Great. And you also have Buckner Hightower for that first item. He's on here as well. So between those two, you should have plenty of opportunities to answer questions from the applicant.
All right. If we have no more citizen comments, we'll go into the public hearing and possible, possible action. So number three, the Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing to discuss and consider ordinance number 20-04-02-01 and ordinance of the city council of the city of Lago Vista, Texas to annex pursuant to a voluntary request by the property owners approximately 5.902 acres of land in the WB Corwin survey number 189 Travis County, Texas, located at 5619 Lake Shore Boulevard, Travis County, Texas, into the incorporated municipal boundaries of the city of Lago Vista, Texas, approving a municipal services agreement for the annex area and providing for related matters. Let's see if I can pull something up here. Y'all can all still see me, right? Because I can't, I can't see y'all anymore. All right. So as y'all know, at our last meeting, the applicant came to us with a development agreement for this property. This property is currently in the ETJ. And so they're looking at building some condos at the end of Lake Shore Boulevard. They are, even though they are outside the city limits, they entered into this development agreement with us last month so that they could build their condos in accordance with the standards set by the city of Lago Vista. If, at some point, if we approve their annexation, they're going to want to zone this property as a PDD. And currently they're building it to the commercial resort standards. And at some point in the future, they will be looking at going as a PDD with the baseline of the commercial resort property. So tonight we are looking at their application to voluntarily annex their property into the city limits. If so, it will become part of the city. We will have to update our maps to reflect our new city limits and begin the process for completing wastewater lines to provide water, water and wastewater lines to provide water and sewer to them. And I will open the public hearing at 6:45 PM. And I will start with staff presentation. If there's anything staff would like to add to this introduction at this time. Do we have anything? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I think you outlined it exactly as I would have. You know, this is just the first step of, the second step of the multi-step process. If you do approve the, moving forward on the zoning, I mean, on the annexation for, of the property, then zoning will be the next step. And we will bring back to council a draft PDD document that we've been working on with the, with the applicants.
All right. Thank you. Josh Roy, do y'all have anything to add?
No, sir.
All right. Council, questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, is this, this is the second public hearing on this or is this the first public hearing?
This is the first.
Mr. Mayor, the annexation requirements changed in the last legislative session. And for requests to annex property that are made by the owner of the property, there is only one hearing required. And so this is, this will be the only hearing on the annexation request. As you know, the other parts of the process, the zoning request, those will be separate. They have their own hearings, but for annexation, there's only one hearing required and that's happening now.
Yes, thank you. It is the second time we are discussing this property because the first time was the development agreement. But again, that was a separate, separate step. Any questions, council? And again, we do have the project manager, Stephanie Modl. So if, does anybody have questions for Stephanie at all?
No, I was, I was very impressed with their plan and layout. It was easy to follow. It showed depth of research that they did. I think it's a good way of showing the design and the concept for future projects on different other companies that follow. I was very pleased how they set it up.
Yes, yes, I'd agree.
Comment, Stephanie. Great DA. Thanks for working with the staff. I would recommend that you apply for a land use amendment when you apply for your zoning. You can talk to Roy or Aaron about why that's probably pretty appropriate. I won't go into it now.
The zoning request, is that, is that the third of the fifth step?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
So that'll be the next step. So Roy can get with Stephanie and they can discuss the process for the, and with Aaron, process for zoning request.
We need to amend the land use map, the future land use map. That, and they can apply to do that. That's what I'm suggesting they do with the zoning case.
Aaron and I discussed that a good bit of the day today, exactly. Best way to approach that, actually. All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Counsel? Okay. Well, it's a public hearing, so, and I do have some public in attendance. I have not anybody that's entered a chat. So does that mean that nobody has questions or comments for this annexation? All right. Well, then I will go ahead and I will close the public hearing at 6:50 PM. And if, it is open for possible action if anybody wants to take action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt order 20-04-02-01.
All right. I have a, I have a motion to, to adopt the ordinance?
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, who was the second from?
Arch.
Arch.
Arch. Okay. So a motion by Dick and a second by Arch. Any further comments? All right. This format, Aaron, should we do the roll call? Because I don't know if we can.
It might be best in this particular context.
I mean, I know we can do this, but. All right. So I'll start up at the top. Don?
Your microphone's off, Don.
Is that an I?
I, yes.
Okay. Dick?
Yeah, I.
Arch?
I.
Frank?
I.
David?
I.
And myself, I. So motions adopted unanimous. All right. So now we go into action item number four, discussion and action regarding the design contract award to Freezing Nichols Incorporated for the Phase Two of the Cedar Brakes Park Project. Let me bring up my agenda. Okay. So tonight we're looking at amending the contract with Freezing Nichols. They were originally awarded the contract back in June of 2018. And based on the contract, the way it was entered into back in 2018, they, they were awarded Phase One and the contract stipulates that we could amend the contract to include Phase Two if we're satisfied with the job that they have done. And that is what we are considering tonight. The engineer will design the main park components of Phase Two, parking and maintenance pass, two baseball fields, volleyball court, associated infrastructure with the park of Phase Two of this project. Engineers to provide the city with design and construction schedule and also a realistic construction cost for the proposed improvements. The city has acquired grants to provide for half of this cost. And the remainder funding for the design phase of this project will have to be incurred by the city. Phase Two components of the park anticipated to cost about 1.36 million, of which 500,000 are grant reimbursed. The remainder of funds, should council decide, will be withdrawn from general fund or future revenue allocations. Instruction fund dedicated decisions will be made prior to fiscal year 2021. So during budget time, when we're considering our CIPs and stuff, is when the construction fund dedication decision will be made. City staff anticipating performing a considerable amount of work to design and construct the needed infrastructure outside the park to support it. Staff has also been working with the Texas Park and Wildlife Department to amend our grant application. Staff recommends awarding the design contract to Freezing Nichols for Phase Two. If approved, begin contractual paperwork process for design of this project. And once that has been done, then the staff and the design engineer will reserve, arrange for the project to start. And if, if not approved, the city is in danger of losing the grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife and may jeopardize any future request. So whereas when we started with this, this park project years ago, you know, we, we knew that it was going to be a very large park, park project. We set aside 33 acres. The cost of the completion of this park was going to be quite extensive and we have been seeking out as much as we can as far as grants and stuff. And so whereas we've been successful in getting grants to help, the grants that we have been, have been given, have been matching grants. So for every, you know, 500,000 that we would get in a grant, we would have to match that with 500,000. But that is nowhere near what the total cost of this park will be once it's completed. And the park is being built in phases and to help offset the costs over time to allow us to, to get at least some of the park up and running as we, as we move forward throughout the years, developing out this park. So it, at this time, if staff, Roy or Josh, do y'all have anything to add, add to this?
Mayor, that, that lays out the plan really well. As anyone can go by and see the park right now and see that that Phase One, we're able to move forward with that. There's a lot of work still to do on the entire park, as you mentioned, and it's a longer process. One of the things that we are doing actively, not just working with Texas Parks and Wildlife, but working with some other potential grant opportunities for some other amenities. Texas Parks and Wildlife will only provide grants for certain amenities within the park. And so we've been restricted in some of those areas, but we're trying to maximize some of those public-private partnerships to extend amenities into there. Another thing that we're doing right now simultaneously is extending that water line to the park, Mayor. So if you recall, the, the park Phase One was one capital project and then extending that water line was Phase Two, totally outside of this request, but we are moving forward with those items. And the items that are included inside of this, that second grant with Texas Parks and Wildlife are the items that we have to build or request the amendment.
Right. Yeah. So I know we've had some questions, why we do not have restrooms and, and things like that in the park. I know the, I've seen some comments on Facebook and stuff, wondering what we were going to use for restroom facilities and stuff. Because of the grant is specific and we can, it doesn't cover things like the restrooms. In order to not lose the Parks and Wildlife grants, we have to build what they tell us we have to use that money on. And with the time constraints, I know going into Phase One, getting all the permits from the federal government and the state government and it took us forever just to get all the, all the permits, just to even get this thing started. And we were pushing up on the deadline for the, for the grant, just to even get Phase One done. So those are things, you know, when we look at outside of the, the grants and stuff, we have to look at developing ourself on the restrooms and I believe parking lot and some of the other amenities that's not covered. But we have to make sure we stay within our, our time parameters or we'll be in jeopardy of losing those large grants.
Mayor, just to add to that, we are working with PEC. we are working with PEC, we're working with LCR A, and we're working with a couple of foundations on those amenities. The one thing on that restroom is we can't move forward with a restroom plan until we get water services there. So that's that, that's that critical element. We could have a, we can have a vaulted restroom that doesn't have sewer and has to be pumped out, which a lot of your parks use. But it still needs running water. We don't have a well service over there that we're going to run through those restrooms. So getting that water line in will be a critical path to providing a restroom plan. And we've already been working on some of those estimates. The challenge is we want to make sure that we're providing sufficient restrooms to cover all those facilities. And as you'll see out there now with the grass and the red clay infield going in, you have a baseball field, a softball field, and then that soccer soccer field going in. So right now is still a pretty good time for laying out that master plan and working on it.
And we're still. What we spent so far on what what part have we spent its grant money? And when we started out, we we had a million dollar grant and a million dollar match. So I'm guessing our match portion could be going toward restrooms, right?
So what actually the way we started was the first 500, it was a million dollar total project when we started. So it was a $500,000 grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife. And then it was a $500,000 donation from the city, which was the land or in kind apologies. So we, the first 500,000 was an in kind from the city. And so the first project was roughly 1.56 million dollars, the first phase, $500,000 from the city. And then what was left over was virtually a million dollars from city dollars to go to match that. Yes, we could have added that, but the dollars that we had had to satisfy phase one of the grant. So we couldn't use those dollars. What we could have done and what we can do at any point, you're correct. We could go ahead and ask council to allocate funds to do a restroom or to do a parking lot. The problem with the parking lot is we want to do that last. We want to use the dirt until we get all the infrastructure in, then do the parking lot. But you're exactly correct. We could allocate dollars at any point for restroom facilities.
But we're about to engage a freezing Nichols to design phase two. And I feel like we could change directions a little and and make sure we have restrooms and electricity and available in phase two. It might take a lot of work, but it it seems like a value add. The turn lane is something else that we're I've heard a lot of concern about. It's another $300,000 is the lowest number I heard for a turn lane.
Yeah, Mayor, that's a that's a great plan on this on this phase two. One of the things that we that we have been in discussion with freezing Nichols is making sure that the design includes bringing that water line in. If it includes a sewer line, bringing that sewer line in. And then any potential access in our conversations, excuse me, with PEC to make sure we have the electric, the electric, bringing in the electric is is a big deal. But it's something that we're going to want on this in this park facility because it's, as the mayor said, not only are we working with this 10 acre footprint, but it's something where we're going to be working up to 30 plus acres. And so we want to make sure we have the sufficient capacity for the electricity and to, as I've said, hopefully PEC comes in as a partner on this project. One of the things we're also doing that I didn't mention earlier, if you recall, we had our dialogue with the county about funding a future phase. Our discussion with the county is for phase three, because originally the city never brought the county in to talk about being a partner on this project. So we've laid that out as part of that discussion we had with the county, where the county building other parks here in Travis County in B Cave and Lakeway and putting in their full 21 million dollars or so and operating that part. What we've asked the county to do is to come in on phase three and be a partner to make sure that we have all the infrastructure amenities in. So I I agree with Don that the the requirement is to make sure that our plan for the infrastructure is laid out successfully in phase two. So that as we bring these people in, if we can accelerate the water, the wastewater and the electricity, we do that.
Yeah, I would like to comment that we did actually approach the county way back 1617, whenever we were first talking about this. But the county does their bond projects like on a 10 year basis. And so it was, we had to wait several years before we could actually approach the county for any money. So hopefully they'll come through. They don't, they have not spent any money on any type of parks in Northwest Travis County other than Arkansas Ben, but which is very nice of them to have done. But there are portions of the county that have massive recreation complexes, sports complexes and that the county has spent money on, and they have not done that in our portion of the county. So we're hoping they'll at least contribute some to this public park, so.
My understanding is that the Travis County money won't become available until probably 2023. Is that correct, Josh?
Mayor, that's what I know to be true is that their next bonding capacity would then come out in 23. So that's correct. And I will give the update, Mayor, that water line is now complete. So we're one step closer to being able to feasibly consider the internal infrastructure for those restrooms.
So the water line's complete, and that goes for both watering the fields and bathrooms?
It it could go for both. We still want to make sure that we have the gray water to bring it in and use on the fields once we get that type one set up. So yes, we can use that water for both.
Where does the gray water come from?
It'll come in for from the treatment plants.
So it's treated water.
It is.
Another concern I've heard from someone that's been around for a long time is that as our city grows and we have a lot of bin fill building and population growth that that Cedar Brakes was specifically, we were told to hold on to as much of it as possible for our affluent. And but I think we got to keep that in mind because that was before Josh or Eric were here when that the previous city manager given us a cautionary tale that we were going to need a lot of that land for our affluent.
Yeah, great points. And we saw this year, and as Mayor, as you already alluded, that whole property is over 300 acres. And so the ability to maintain sufficient land over there. But the second part is the fields will also utilize the affluent. What we saw this year is as long as the two golf courses are open in terms of property to provide that affluent, we actually ended up with a shortage, but that's a short term view. And as as Council Barthel saying, long term, we just need to make sure that we have a viable option to spread the affluent and distribute it because we don't have the ability to put it back into the lake.
Right, yeah, at some point during the summer, TECQ actually shut us down on on using it on the golf course because we did not have enough affluent water in reserve. Yeah, I used to, years ago, we used to be able to put the affluent water back in the lake, which seems kind of odd because when the TCE, TCEQ comes out and tests it, they'll tell you that it's it actually tests cleaner than the water that's in Lake Travis to begin with. But yet we can't put it back in there, so. Who knows with future water, groundwater and stuff, if that'll ever change back. But right now we cannot put it into the lake.
My thoughts after having been, I'm the liaison for the Parks and Recs, right? So I've had a few meetings and I've learned some stuff along the way. But it feels like that this, we've had a little mission creep on this park already. And I mean, this moment in time, we're having a bit of a pause in our society. It doesn't seem like spending millions on a park facility for people to get together is a is a real high priority right now. So I think if we're if we're spending any money, it's to make sure that we have phase two designed to optimize the ability to make the park functional between now and 2023. We would like as much function as possible out of it before we start spending $4 million on a park, waiting for more money coming in, you know, three years from now to make it, to put lights on it, right? So I I feel like it's, it should be a high priority to, we've already spent, you know, we're working our way towards $2 million on a park that we we kind of planned as a million dollar park with a million dollar match, right? So I I just want to be responsible with it and and let everyone know. Eric Belay in our in our last Parks and Recs meeting said, it's really important that you get these projects started. Because once you get them started, then you'll be able to, the council will want to spend the money to finish them. But I don't ever want to see us, I mean, we're a town of 8,800 people with crumbling streets. And I think spending $4 million on a park right now is highly irresponsible. And I've seen it in the CIP, you know, with all the bells and whistles, we're talking about 14 million dollars. And and that seems kind of ludicrous. So I don't want to fall into the trap of just trying to keep feed this thing. I would like to have a great master plan, maybe with the the assistance of this motion tonight to get freezing Nichols to get us a master plan, but to to phase the park in useful phases where you you're going to have functionality from the time we're allowed to gather in groups again to 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 use it until we have the the money and 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 the infrastructure all in place to to take care of the basic services our city is in dire need of, right?
Mayor, that's what it with that direction, that's what the contract with freezing Nichols extending could do. And the the beauty is the way that the language was presented originally with them taking the lead on the project and then extending their contract, they are able to provide that continuity and they're able, I would say easier to provide us with that plan. And then anything coming in, remember, the council would have to approve any kind of construction contracts before the city could move forward on any type of that project. So maybe as we, if this is approved by council to extend freezing Nichols contract, we focus on those areas and say, you know, if we want to make it a higher priority to try and get in those other amenities sooner rather than later, I think we need to focus on that and tell them, make sure that design has it elemented in. It may still be a separate project with a separate funding source. But if that's a priority of of the city, we need to make sure to articulate that to them if the council moves forward with this contract.
And I see it, I see it kind of as as twofold. First being that because we've got the grant money and the requirements that come with that, we've got to make sure that we're fulfilling the requirements of those grants. However, whether it's a separate project or not, as we're moving forward, we should, I think we should, I kind of agree with Don in that we should make sure we're fully supporting the elements that we're required to build before we start looking out into other no other expenses. So like if we're building the ball fields, the soccer fields, phase one, phase two, whatever phases we're in, we need to make sure that, I agree, we should have, you know, the water and electricity and everything to support those fields prior to expanding into the trails and and whatever else maybe in phase three or phase four. We just need to make sure we get with freezing Nichols. And they know exactly what our priorities are in addition to what the grants require us.
Mayor, in the agenda packet, you'll see the phases broken down in phase two and then the three individual items on that on those phases. And what they'll do is they'll satisfy the grant requirements. But then they'll lead us into what the overall scope of the project is as well. So it it goes right in line with what you're requesting, Mayor.
Question.
Mr. Mayor? Just to.
Right.
Got a question. And I.
Yes, Frank.
On Don's point, I think it's well taken. What are we building now in phase one?
Phase one, if you look at page 69 of the agenda packet, is the soccer field, the youth softball, the youth baseball and sand volleyball courts. I believe we also have the walking trail included there.
So Don's point is you want to get those built with the appropriate, I think we're calling them amenities, but that includes restrooms. Build for those before we start building more ball fields. Is that correct, Don? Is that what you're suggesting?
I I think we need a major reconsider of, you know, what we do to finish phase one and and absolutely what goes into phase two to make sure we have a functional park. But the, you know, what the public voted for and what we had public hearings for was a $2 million park. And every new sheet I see about this park, it's it's going to rapidly approach $4 million from us before it has functionality. And that's a problem. That's that's not what I voted for in the past and don't want to hang on that cross.
Okay, let me, let me try to clarify. Josh, does that mean we're going to finish the phase one improvements without restrooms being built before we start phase two?
Correct.
If we approve this contract with the scope of work that we've seen in the packet, you're going to design to for those those improvements plus phase two, correct? Plus the other, the other, the other part elements like ball field. They're going to, they're going to do two things. You're going to get the amenities in like restrooms for the phase one improvements that are under construction and are going to sign phase two improvements, correct?
Yes.
So now this, Don, do you want to start the other park improvements? The trail, the playground, picnic tables, et cetera, et cetera, which are listed as part two now? Or do you want to hold off on that?
But my advice right now would be to get as much as we can out of phase one and and revisit what the citizens really want as far as the sports complex. It's already become much more complex than what we thought it would be. When it was a little vague in the planning stages, I think we all made the assumption that if you build a baseball field, a soccer field and sand volleyball, there'd be a restroom, right? So incorrectly assumed that, but I would like to, you know, rein in the horse, stop it as much as possible and go back to what we've spent, what we plan to spend and and approve it in steps along the way without jeopardizing any grants, of course. But, you know, a grant could be like a discount from MSRP on a used car or a new car, right? You 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 don't necessarily get a lot of benefit out of a grant spending money that we should be spending on our streets.
So Josh, is there a page on here that shows what what's required by Parks and Wildlife for the phase two of the grant?
Well, page six actually shows, or page 66 in the packet shows the breakdown of of phase one, two, three, and four. And phase two shows the items that have been shifted over into to the grant. So those items are the ones that would have to be completed in phase two in order to receive grant reimbursement.
So the the two baseball, softball?
Yep. One volleyball.
Trail, playground, picnic tables? No, let's see.
Correct, all those in phase two. Those are the items that are in the grant for phase two.
So we've got to spend $3 million to get $500,000 grant?
Total of phase two is 1.36. And we get 500,000 out of that from the grant? Correct.
I think something that we're missing is there's two grants. There was the initial 500,000 grant. There was the initial 500,000 grant and then we received a second grant. So we have a million dollars in grants. And we have put the land and then I think it was 578,000, if I remember right, that we put into the last budget for this park. The one thing that I would say is since the very first time we discussed this park, from the very first drawings we had on it, from the very first talk about it, I don't ever remember anybody saying this is going to be a million dollar park. Everything I've ever heard said that this was going to be in the end to have everything that we wanted in it, everything the citizens had come up with on the master plan. But this was going to be a $4 million park. That's what we were discussing from the very get go. I don't ever remember discussing any number less than that.
Is that, are you thinking $4 million out of our city pocket and?
No, 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 $4 million to do the whole project. And we've already got one, we've almost got 2 million of that already paid for. But there are things that we have got to do to make sure that we get that other $500,000 in grant money. We don't do the right things. We don't spend the money the right way. We don't get it.
Yeah, Mayor, and the, the original, the original consultant, when you brought in the consultant to look at the first grant and start talking about the design process, didn't include restrooms, didn't include a paved parking lot and didn't include lighting. And so you'll see that in phase three, those elements alone are $750,000. So the fact that that original consultant didn't design out those factors, I mean, I guess like Don's saying, maybe people thought the assumption was there, but if you read the documents, you'll see, and this being, as, as you pointed out, this being prior to, to this, our current team being in place. When we came in, that was our, that was our comment to the council was you can't have this expectation that you're going to build this vast park with all of these amenities that everyone wants and, and think it's only going to cost a few million dollars. I mean, in all honesty, comparing every other park in the region would show you that our park is still going to be relatively less expensive than theirs. But back to that point, phase one and phase two, 3.2 million dollars and 1 million of that is a grant. So 2.2 million dollars from the city for, for the 1 million dollars. Yeah, that's, that's virtually one third in grant and two thirds from, from city funds. And that'll get us through a phase one and a phase two. And that gives us the opportunity to seek additional funding sources for part of that bathroom and lighting that we're putting in. So it's definitely a challenge.
So Josh, the, the 2.2 that's coming from the city to cover phase one and phase two, is that just to com, our portion to complete just what is required by the, the grant? Or can any of that be shifted around in the design phase to maybe go towards restrooms or something?
What we've had to do, Mayor, is exactly that. To side, to satisfy the grant requirements, we have to have so many value points in each phase to get the grant to score high enough to receive those dollars from Texas Parks and Wildlife. What we were able to do in phase one, since those costs came in higher, because it was much later than when we wanted to put out the RFP for the contractor, as you mentioned, based on delays from getting permits. We were able to come back to Texas Parks and Wildlife, shift a few of those items down into phase two and then say that we'll satisfy those items completely in the phase two packet. I don't think there's a whole lot of meat to move around in phase two, Mayor, out of that 2.2 million to, to put in the restrooms. But that's something that we're looking at constantly with that engineering design to figure out how we get the, the restrooms are priority one, once we get these elements in. Part of that original design said, when you're not paving a parking lot, you bring in portable restrooms and I, you know, that's just an epic fail. You don't put portable restrooms in something where you're putting millions of dollars into a park. You build clean restrooms, even if they're vaulted restrooms. You want them to be something that people can have, take pride in, just like the POA now. They're trying to go back and start adding restrooms to their public parks. It's going to take money. It's expensive, but it's a value add to the park.
Right.
Well, I have a question.
I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I have a question. One more. Arch. Let me, let me turn the, the mic up a little bit. Is that better?
We can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you? Okay. Here's the question I have. You know, we've been talking about the money that's been spent so far. We actually have not put cash money down, have we, at this point? All, all we did was a, was a match to the, the money that was given to us. The hack note that we put in was not really money out of pocket. That was matching funds that were in kind by virtue of land. Is that not correct?
Yep. Mayor, there, there was the in kind of land, but then to satisfy all those items in phase one, we have spent those dollars out of city coffers. So the income was planned.
How much have we actually spent from our budget?
I'm going to ask, Mayor, I'm going to say, looking at those numbers there, that it's, it's right around a million dollars.
That we've actually already spent?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because that total on phase one and phase two is going to end up on the project cost of being the 3.2 million. So that's something, we'll spend the full 3.2 and then just like we reimbursed the first 500,000, we'll get the next 500,000 back. So then we'll effectively be at, at 2.2 million out of city funds for this project at that time at completion.
What is, what is our timeframe for completion of, what's our timeline for phase two?
Um, phase, well, phase one, the timeline is June. So phase two, depending on when it goes to completed engineering and construction, phase two would be approximately another year to build out. But we have to get the engineering completed before we can go ahead and get the, and that's from, that's completion of engineering and the advertising, Mayor, and getting that back to council. So I think timeline, safe to say, you've got a year from when we have that done.
Is that our timeline or is that the grant timelines? What are, what are, what are their stipulations?
So grant timelines, two years for the phase. So once they give the grant, that's two years for the phase. There's a, there's some more information on page 70 and 71 on the expenditures to date. But yes, so Mayor, two years unless you get a, a waiver. An extension.
So in, in theory, the, the money to complete phase two would not necessarily have to all be allocated during this budget cycle. We could break that up over two years. Just long as everybody knows, citizens, council, everybody knows that, you know, if we do that, it's just that much longer to complete the, the project.
That's correct, Mayor. You would actually, you would actually be able to allocate part of that now as you did before and putting that $500,000 aside into that fund. And then you would come back and in FY 21 with the capital projects plan, you would go ahead and allocate the additional dollars then. Because if we're, if we get it to bid and construction, if you, if it goes as far out as saying completion of phase two happens by November of 21, then you'll have the full time to get those dollars allocated.
Hey, Don, can you, can you still hear us? Okay, I see DB, but I don't see, I think we lost.
Turned off his video.
Mayor, and I'll clarify one of those points Darcy had asked over here on the chat, just about when the grass is in on the, on the three fields that we have active now, will we have sufficient water? That's the line that has been, that's ready for those fields. So go back to that point. And I just responded back via the message that the, when the grass is in, those fields will be ready to grow, be maintained, and then we'll hand them over to Parks and Rec.
All right, let me ask, let me ask you a question, Mr. Mayor. According to how the phases are going, phase two would be somewhere during 2021. Phase three would then be somewhere 21, 22. And phase four would be like 22, 23? Is that basically the timeline and completion of all four phases?
Mayor, if you get into phase four, then you're going to go out farther than that because you got to have the planning time and the contract time coming back in. I think you're going to be easily 24 for phase four, potentially pushing that in to 25. And that's why when we talked before with Roy and Eric and with the county, the goal was if we could get in, get funding for phase four from the county, then that would be the extra amenities at the end. And by that time, we'll have a functioning park system. And then these are the add-ons. These are the things where people are saying, are we able to get the skate park? Are we able to get some other amenities that may be a value add for the park?
Comment.
Yes, Frank.
I think Don brings up some good points. I think generally speaking, from what I hear you saying and what I agree with is that we first ought to finish what we started. We ought to finish that and do it right. As Josh has indicated, what we're approving is design and cost estimates, more, I guess, more accurate cost estimates than we've got right now for future improvements. Now, what we actually decide to build after we've seen that design, I think that remains for us to, to approve. But conceptually, Don, I think you're right. I, I don't want to build much more than what we've started in terms of the actual improvements like ball fields. And it don't start more ball fields and uh, until some later point. And, and I don't think we're doing that if we prove Freeze and Nichols or whoever we wanted to sign tonight.
You're not on, Don?
Should be.
It says you're on, but you're not. But I think he's going to type now into the chat and I'll read that out for us. Yeah, the chatting is working. So if you can hear me, Don, you're good. Just can't hear you at all. You see that comment? Don said he agrees with Frank's thoughts, but not with Frank overall. I'm just kidding. He didn't say that second part.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't think we're, I really don't think we're in a hurry to have this massive park completed, you know, within the next year or so. And we, I think we all pretty well understand that this was a five to 10 year project.
Correct.
We ju, we just have to make sure that we're meeting the grant requirements. And then beyond that, we can approach it at whatever speed we want to approach it at and based on what money is available. And hopefully as time goes on, you know, if it takes us to 20 21, 2021, 22 to get through the phase two, you know, that, that's, that's fine. Long as what we do build, we can support it with, you know, the water and, and sewer and bathrooms and everything we need to support it. And hopefully by, by then, other things will come around, you know, the county, the CD, the community development block grant, CDBG from PEC, LCRA. You know, maybe there's some other organizations that can provide grants as well. Uh, there was a text dot listed on there as, as a possibility that we're working on. So, you know, as, as it goes, as time goes on, maybe we can have different funding sources and you know, the, the Don Bartholomew Corporation will be a corporate sponsor and give us money for. You know what? We could name it the Don Bartholomew Soccer Field Sponsorship.
I feel like I'm losing naming rights here, Mayor. Don's other comment, Mayor, if you see, he said, have the total budget in mind before, before moving forward at all. I, I, I think that's a huge point that Frank has reiterated as well in terms of that's why we phase out these projects is so that we can complete that phase and then move on to another phase and not commit ourselves to a bigger plan. And I think that's where we come back to the, the council, the sitting council will have to decide what is that? What does it look like? You know, what are those needs? Part of the strategic planning process is going to include some of that discussion from the community of what are the needs you want to see met here in the next three to five years in the community? This will be a big focal point and one of the things that I believe when council meets with the strategic planning on April
14.
14th, that we need to put it out there and say, we want to see a series of questions to the community addressing exactly that. What are the needs that we think Parks and Recreation should focus on over a three to five year period?
That's phase four, Mark Darcy.
I think that's phase five now because it's multiple billions of dollars to get that music venue out in that area.
Um, and kind of something that Don touched on earlier. I can remember, you know, when we were discussing this years ago, I was pretty much aware that the city contribution side was going to be over 4 million, somewhere between 4 and 6 million dollars. But the weirdest thing is time concept in your, in your mind. It, you didn't realize when you're looking at the paper and you see that restrooms and stuff are in phase three, it, it would, you just didn't really, it didn't really dawn on you that phase three was four years down the road, you know, you, you, you just didn't kind of realize that. So now that it's become a reality, we're having to readjust and, and make sure that we are providing necessities along with the amenities, so. All right.
Yeah, Mayor.
Anybody else, council got questions, comments, or Don still typing? I can see his mouth moving. Is Don typing?
Um, must have a functional park by the time we've spent 2.2 million.
So, uh, community that's out there, I know Darcy's been typing in. Uh, anybody else have questions they want to type in or ask? I think I see some typing going on, but.
Brenda's typing, but I'm not sure if it's coming through yet.
Okay. While we're waiting, Darcy, what'd you do with Fred? Fred, isn't that, wasn't that the name of Berettas Bird?
Yeah, yeah, but her name's Macy.
Oh, Macy, okay.
I flew her back to the, her curtain rod that she sits on. She was just in here and then she'll be wanting to be here on the screen and she pulls off, he's on my computer, so.
All right, so so Brenda Elliott, restrooms are important prior to additional fields. Okay, yeah.
Mayor and Don asked the question of have the turn lanes, has the turn lane been bid yet? The answer to that is no. We have had a couple of meetings with Tex Dot to discuss the turn lanes with them and working with the plan that they're using for their contractors on the turnouts that they're using. So our discussions with them have been, how do we access that? Is there a center turn lane? And then is there an XL and a D cell lane? So we're having those, those discussions now, but it has not been, um, it has not been designed yet and hasn't been finalized. and hasn't been finalized.
All right, well, Darcy, type your question. Or say, oh, I thought you had additional information.
Mayor, the question from Council Bartholomew was a ballpark cost on the turn lane. He mentioned earlier $300,000. I, I don't know what the guesstimate is on the turn lane. Typically speaking, if we're only going to have a turn lane on one side, I would say you're 75 to 100,000. But if you're doing DC and a center turn lane and widening that so that you're having the full impact analysis, then I think the 300,000 is, is a good number. That's what Eric has on the paper is the $300,000 estimate. And that would be a complete composite of how that intersection would occur.
Well, you know, I've been trying to get him, get him to give us a divided highway with the grass median all the way through the city with turn lanes at each intersection and lights at like Barque. And they're telling me that's anywhere from four to 10 years out, but.
Well, this, Mayor, this is on phase three. So that's what you see on phase three is that second number. And that's the 1431 improvements, the transportation improvement, and then the tech stop permitting. And so that's why we're having that dialogue with them now is so that we're ahead of where they're at. Part of their discussion has been to see, to finish their project on 1431 for the turnouts. But that's where you're going to have that, that number of a composite for 300,000, being able to wrap that up. And that is a critical element. You, you got to have access into that, into a park if you're going to expect people to get into it. Mayor, we did miss the one comment. Brenda said that her and Mike both appreciate the work that I'm doing for the city. So it's, I've read it.
Okay, yeah, I didn't see that one.
It's on there, Mayor, you just can't see it.
Walking trail from the middle school, there's about 8,000 feet is something I've heard of. Is that accurate? You talking about the distance? Because I know that the Conservancy Trail, Turnback Canyon Trail Conservancy is working on that trail from the swimming pool area over through the canyon or over to the park. And that's something that they are working on, but I don't know the distance.
Mayor, I don't know the distance either, but that's the connection point that you're talking about is coming out of the back of the swimming pool complex and then hitting that trail down that area that Don's mentioned before. I don't know the length of it.
Yeah, I think that goes around the, the old nine-hole course. Some, kind of goes to the southern side of the nine-hole course and the tech, and joins in with the park.
We do have a lot, sorry, go ahead.
The Tisara Trail System is only divided from the Cedar Brakes by a creek now. So, so that our trail, if we build it on our property and then you can, you're practically linking up with the Tisara Trail System.
Correct, yes. Any else? Well, if that is, everybody, if that's everything, let's see. The easement, already heard we had an easement. I think, is that in, you talking about something separate besides the Trail Conservancy and the Tisara Trails and all that?
Some of those areas on that Trail Conservancy has dedicated areas where the city already owns the property. There were a couple of areas that might have been on private property that the city didn't own. And the Trail Conservancy.
Uh-oh. Power's off on my side of the building. Do you have a failure, power failure?
Yeah, I've, I've called in now, so.
Okay, because we're completely black here at the condos.
Are you?
Yeah, it was really weird. It went really fast. In the neighborhood, people have been complaining that they've been hearing a odd buzzing going down Dawn. So I don't know if anyone's investigated that. But, but yeah, it's all out. All of Dawn Drive is completely out.
Yeah, the beacon is off at the airport. There's not a light anywhere.
Aaron, can you hear us?
Yeah, I hear you. It's black in the office.
Okay.
The light you're seeing is the reflection of the computer on my face.
Right, I think so. Everybody else who was powered up might be down as well, correct?
Yes, I expect that.
Kind of feel like we didn't have any pressing matters. Freeze and Nichols can obviously wait. I'm, I'm on my phone.
Me too.
I'm on the computer. I'm on my computer.
I, I switched the computer, everything went off. And then I went to my phone. It looks like the police station's black as well. I hear the generator running on the, oh, I think that's the little food place over there.
Oh, so we, that lost the internet.
I'm, I'm just, I called in, there's people calling in.
You already in?
Yeah.
Got to get to call in because otherwise the meeting's going to end in five minutes, so.
Well, we can get, I'm going to tell Dick Weatherly here, let me do that. Do we feel like we have any pressing business that needed to get done tonight?
People are cussing at the police station, so something's definitely wrong.
Uh-oh.
They're cussing?
It sounds like they're cussing, yeah. You could hear them. I think they went outside and you could, they were.
Meeting adjourned, I would say.
I don't see the mayor's, you know, there's several callers in. Councilmember Bartholomew, are you doing it by phone?
Yeah, I'm on the phone.
Okay.
Okay, so right now I hear Aaron, I hear Sandra, I hear Council Bartholomew. Any other councillors on yet?
I haven't heard any others.
No, that one, you don't know that one? You got it, Roy? So he can dial the number. And so.
It's an emergency meeting for, I got a fire station tomorrow.
I'm hearing somebody. Okay, I got Frank. Right now we have, right now we have councillors Robins and Bartholomew. Hang on, we're calling the others to get them. Mayor's calling in now.
I'm going to be leaving my backdrop at the airport lounge, Josh.
That's good.
Looks nice.
That is good, I think it worked out nicely.
But I'm going to go somewhere where it's not dark. I don't know that there's anywhere in town that's not dark, it sounds like.
I completely out. PEC doesn't have an answer for us right yet, so.
We're literally in the dark.
Like, like the whole town?
Yeah.
That's bizarre, huh?
Point Venture too.
No agenda podcast, man, you were talking about this stuff.
All right, I'm on.
The internet was going to go down for 10 days.
We've got the mayor, councillor Robins, and councillor Bartholomew. Let's see if we can call, we need Dave and Art. And, Frank's on. Yeah, do you want to?
Six one. I think my wife has Pat on. The wife says Lago, Point Venture, and the hollows are all out of interest.
Do you think someone hit a power pole? Are we one source of power coming out here? Does anyone know?
You know what I think? I would say we probably are, but I think there's a back line coming back from across to Leander, Darcy.
Okay. Because usually if something goes out like this, someone's hit a pole or something or a big, huge transformer has exploded.
From what I've heard, Point Venture, Lago, and the hollows are all out. So I'm thinking that power station right there off of Bowman Ford, right there at, anyway, right there. Something's gone wrong there, more than just a transformer.
Roy's calling Dave, or calling, yeah, Dave now. Dick is 432-553-4103.
Yeah, I'll come on in. Star's calling Dick.
What are we trying to accomplish, Josh?
We just got to get the council back on so that you can call the question on this one and then end the meeting. That's really it.
Call the question, what do you mean by that?
On that last agenda item, no vote was taken. The mayor was starting to talk and he blew the whole system up. So you'll either vote on that act, on that item. You'll vote on that item and then just end the meeting at X number of times.
You could dial into it. Hello?
Hello, Dave?
Hello? Yes, it's me, it's me. I'm on, I'm online.
Dick and Arch, there's only two of them.
How is that all out over Lago, huh?
Okay, so that's Dave.
From the hollows all the way to Point Venture.
Really? All the way to Point Venture, huh?
I would say that substation right there at the concrete plant, right there off of Bowman.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, something has happened at the substation.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay, we're almost, so now we have, we have the mayor, we have Robins, Bartholomew, and William?
William, yes.
Okay, so let's get, soon as Dick calls in, that's going to be the group because Arch's phone's about to die and he has no backup.
Okay.
Use your car, go run your car.
Yep, go plug, plug it into your car and.
Can't open the garage door, so he'll, he'll fume himself out. You know, you don't, you don't want to do that, please.
Oh, my God.
You talk about emergency then.
Yeah, I know.
Why all, why all of a sudden do I see zombies?
Did Dick make it in?
Mayor, if we get Weatherly on there, then you can go ahead and move.
Okay.
I mean, you've got four now.
How are you going to get minutes? What about Sandra?
Sandra's on.
Okay.
Sandra and Aaron are on, and I'm on.
Yeah, I'm on as well.
For the record, I've got Roy and Star standing here. The HR guy ran out the door and jumped in his car and I don't think he's ever coming back, so.
Might never see him again.
Any luck on Weatherly?
Hey, Josh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm using Sue's phone, so, oh, I'll do what I can from here.
Oh, okay, so we have Arch?
Yeah, so maybe you've got, you've got five now.
I'm back.
And Dick, and Dick's back.
I'm back.
It's lame passes, electricity, okay. I will entertain it.
Entertain what?
Motion.
Motion.
I make a motion that, I make a motion that we approve the, the design contract with Freeze and Nichols, Freeze and Nichols and work at making sure we get all the elements that we want in it, but we need to move forward. work at making sure we get all the elements that we want in it, but we need to move forward.
Okay.
We're approving the extension, right?
As, as we discussed in executive session, the proper motion for this is an amendment to the contract.
Amendment to the contract to extend it, Freeze and Nichols on doing the design cost for the Phase Two.
What, and we also have to...
Would the maker of the motion accept an amendment?
What's the amendment? Mr. Frank?
And authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract and price with Freeze and Nichols.
Yes.
With that amendment, I'll second.
Are we going to have discussion?
Alright, so we, we have to...
Um, my question is, what's the hurry?
Well, the only thing we're doing is getting into design cost, you know, they're not doing any construction.
Yeah, but we're spending seventy-five thousand dollars for something we're not sure what we're getting. Um, why would we press this right now instead of...
We'll, we'll make sure that the staff, we'll make sure that the staff works at, at, at making sure we put the necessary elements that we've been discussing for the last hour into that design cost, so we know what we're looking at.
So, the, go back to the question, what's the hurry? We got no citizen, um, it, it just feels like it's, it's being pushed.
Mr. Mayor, we're going, we're going to have to, we're going to have to pay somebody to get the design. Somebody's going to have to be paid.
Can we not sit down with our own company?
We, we're also trying to deal with the grant deadline.
When is the grant deadline?
Two years from the time we started.
Okay, so it's, it's not that pressing, right? If we had to wait two weeks to revisit this? And what if we had a, June is the deadline?
June is when the original contract was issued, June of 2018. That's when the original contract was signed.
So we, so we have plenty of time. I, I don't see, uh, any reason to justify taking action on this right now. Um, I think we could sit down, we could have a work session with the council and some public involvement and the engineer and see where we are and where we're going before we spend seventy-five grand to not be able to tell someone where we are and where we're going. I, I feel like we need to get our ducks in a row before we engage a firm, and, and we got plenty of time to do it before June. Doesn't that make more sense?
Well, my question is, is design out, go, so, nothing's going to change.
I think a lot's going to change. I, I don't think you guys understand how, where this project is right now.
That's the time of the design team.
Yeah, so we're having a design team, but don't you think we should all be on one sheet of music before we hire a design team?
That's, this is, this is the design team that's been doing this design.
They're the ones we've been working with. They have more into this and know more about what's going on with it than anybody else.
Well, that's, that's good and bad, in my opinion, because we, we, we got roped into a Phase One that didn't have a bathroom. Uh, it didn't, it, it seems like we're a little off track.
Don, there's no need for a bathroom right now. Those fields can't be played on. Nobody's going to play on those fields for a year. Phase One didn't have anything to do with bathrooms. It had to do with the grant and getting the project underway so that there's something to do out there. Right now, there's no need for a bathroom. The fields aren't finished, nothing's open, roads aren't complete, there's no place to park.
That, that all was supposed to be done by July. And it was supposed to be a soft opening. I, I just, I feel like we, we don't have a handle on where we are, where we're going, where we've been, what we've spent, what, what the long-term, you know, what, when do we stop spending?
Well, all of, uh, where we are, what we spent, where we're going, all that's in the, all that is in that presentation that's in our packet.
Yeah, that presentation in the packet is quite vague. It, it's not specific, and that's where, that's where we got to where we are. It's the previous agreements were not specific enough.
I, Don, I, I appreciate the kind of comments generally that you're making, but I disagree with you that we don't have detail. So we, I think we have really good detail, which also includes the information that Josh put out to us. Uh, I don't know, the last week or 10 days or so. So the comment that some of us don't know what we're doing or where we're going, for me, I don't agree with that. But I agree with the point that generally you're making about making sure we get our ducks lined up before we build a bunch of stuff. That's going to require us to spend some money for design. And when I looked at what the price on Freeze Nichols is, the seventy-five or whatever that number is, that is real low. And I think the reason for that is because the staff's going to do a bunch of the work that this engineer generally would be doing. So I think we're getting the right contractor for a really good price.
So just tell me what the hurry is, Frank.
Yeah, it, for me, it's, yeah, the hurry, only part of the hurry that I'm worried about is that it's forced us to do it in the, in the context that we're trying to deal with it on the phone. And I would rather have been sitting in a regular council meeting. On the other hand, I don't see any reason to slow down. That's my point. I don't see any reason to slow down. I don't know why we need to wait.
Yeah, that's true. My question is, why do we need to wait?
I don't want to loan you my wallet, I'll tell you that, because we're about to spend seventy-five thousand dollars and we don't know what we're asking for. Right? We got to agree as a council what we want all in in this park. And when, when it's open, what do we want before we go engage someone to design that for us? Right? They're, they're not going to have the answers until we give them to them, and if we go ahead and hire them, then they're probably going to get all their input just from the staff. And the staff hasn't been in town long enough to really have a, a total grip on that by themselves. They don't, they don't have the history. So I, I feel like we're supposed to be oversight to help them not make mistakes.
Well, Phase One and Two are, well, uh...
I get about every third word out of you, Ed.
That's what I'm getting.
Phase One and Phase Two are already completely lined out what we want because they're...
It's pretty much what I'm saying, is that they were lined out poorly because we're two phases deep and two-point-two million dollars, and we don't have a functioning anything. That, that seems like an oversight, which is our job as a council.
Don, do you not understand that the, the grants that we got dictated what we could do? There were things that the grants would not include and did not put into this money.
I understand.
And it's what, it didn't make any difference what we wanted to do. It's what they said we had to do.
I, I think you've, you've given them a little more authority than they have, and, uh, we, we still get to spend our part with, with some discretion. It's, it's how we spend their part.
Well, I think you, I think you need to, I think you need to go read the agreements with them, because the deal is, they gave us the money, we mashed it, and they told us what to do.
I, I understand there's, we get points. It's not they tell us what to do. It's we allocate our points to try to get more grants, right? My, my only point right now, as we're having a difficult conversation on the phone, is why are we having a difficult conversation on the phone? Why don't we just adjourn this meeting and, I don't think there's a deadline in play that is not managed better at another time.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't see where in two weeks anything is going to change. Uh, because again, on page sixty-six, it outlined exactly what we were trying to get designed, and that is change of, of what, what is dictated by the grant. So, the only play we had in there was the two-point-two million dollars that the city was going to spend. And we've already heard that, uh, because of what we have to use to supplement, uh, completing the grant requirements, we did not have any room in that two-point-two million to, uh, adjust. So there's really nothing that we can change.
I don't think that's factual at all, Ed.
And so that's why we were talking about anything else is going to have to be a, a separate project.
Yeah, I, I, I think you're over, overstating the case there a little bit, and I ask you the same question. What's two weeks going to cost us in these uncertain times? Why are you guys, why is this cake already baked again? Wha- what have you guys already decided on? It's, it just doesn't make sense to be forcing this right now with the citywide power outage. Trying to decide on an engineering firm for a park that has a difficult future.
Well, it was, it was put on the agenda as an action item.
Doesn't mean we have to take action.
Huh?
It doesn't mean we have to take action.
It does not, but at the time, right now, we got a motion and a second. So, we have to take a vote on that motion and a second. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I, I could, I could see you would force a vote, or if... Yeah, you do what you want, Ed. Just make sure we get it in the minute.
It doesn't, it matter what I want. That's parliamentary procedure.
Okay, you feel like it's parliamentary procedure? Or you could table it. We could, we could entertain a second motion and table it.
I, I cannot, I have to vote on the motion first. I can't, I can't table a motion.
Yeah, well, um...
Let me, let me add a parliamentary...
Do what you want.
Call the question. Mayor, call the question.
Call the questions, right? Well, you, I don't care, you guys do what you want to do. Just, if someone wants to vote for this right now in these circumstances, then feel free to vote away.
Eric, during the vote.
Hey, Mike. Uh, the whole city's, I'm not on a city council meeting still.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we're, we're all sitting in the dark letting our food go to waste. We're in a city council meeting.
Trying to discuss who that is talking to, or whatever, but...
I think it's Darcy.
Hey, Ed. Can I butt in here? Hey, Ed, can I butt in?
Yes, go ahead.
As far as the parliamentary procedure goes, uh, you've had a motion made, you've had it seconded, and there's been discussion. And I think the only thing that's left to do is to vote, because the, the time now is to call the question, which means you're asking for the vote. And that's procedurally what you need to do.
Well, I called the question.
Now, he's the one that calls the question. The mayor, the mayor calls the question.
Frank, Frank called the question.
In this, ma- the mayor's, the mayor's part is to say, um, are you ready for the, for the question? And the question is, the vote.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Just giving it out, try mine there.
Alright, can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Alright, so...
So, this, this power outage, just for reference, I just found out from a fireman buddy that it, uh, it goes to Lampassus and Marble Falls and Spikeswood. Three hundred and thirty thousand people without power right now.
All the way to...
And to Lampassus. I mean, that's a haunt. This is not a local problem.
Alright, so. I've got a motion. I've got a second. I'll start over. I've got a motion and a second. We've had further discussion. So now we will call the question. So Place One? Is that, is that, Don? That's, uh, hey, David?
Dave, yeah, yes.
Place Two's Don?
Nay.
Place Three, Arch?
Aye.
Place Four's Tim, he's not on. Place Five is Dick?
Yes, aye.
And Place Seven's Frank. I mean, Place Six is Frank.
Aye.
And now vote aye. The motion is adopted.
Five to one. Alright, and with that, I will, I'll call the motion, the, the meeting adjourned at eight seventeen P. M.
Have a good one.
Hallelujah.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.